Frame and please, members are also obliged to make good use of the time here.
And thanks for the reminder. I promise I wouldn't repeat what has been already said. Now, I do have some observations about or over the amendments to Chinese text of certain defense provisions containing the quote "could not with reasonable diligence" unquote references. Now, I know my Democratic colleague Jeremy Tam has talked a lot about this reasonable or rather reasonableness business. I'm not going to repeat that. I just noted that you need to, in this regard, refer to an objective test of what a person could have been reasonably expected to do, to have done in the circumstances, i.e. under the provisions of a certain ordinance, a certain existing law. So we are talking about a hypothetical situation and there were variations in a Chinese expression of this particular legal phrase. And so we need to get it changed. Of course, in principle, how could I object, right? The thing is, I'm not very familiar with the legalese. And on that point, I need to remind the pro-Beijing camp people. When we were examining, studying the copyright law previously and when we were dealing with the co-location ordinance as well, I queried about certain semantics problems and I got scolded as though I was being nitpicking, that I was being petty and so on and so forth. No, legalese is very important and that's why we need to get this done and done right. Now, my only observation that's not been observed, not been done by my colleagues, is the fact that I thought we are going to standardize this particular phrase, that there will be uniformity to an absolute degree. But then I found at least in three cases, the Chinese version would start with the expression in Chinese, even, dixie, dixie with reasonable diligence. I don't quite understand why the difference. I hope Ms. Zheng would give us a little reply on that. The why is that sometimes we need the word even in Chinese and sometimes we don't. And there's no uniformity as a result. Where's the standardization? And regarding the semantic change as raised, proposed by my other Democratic colleague Fernando Cheng, that we should seriously drop wordings like mentally retarded. I perfectly agree. Retarded indeed is a very demeaning term and were the same as mentally handicapped. And we should get that changed. I talked to Mr. Zheng just now and he taught me. In general terms, we talked about persons with disabilities, okay? Some people do come with disabilities at birth and some via accidents and so on and so forth. But what do we change it to? And the suggestion was we should call people previously mentally retarded should now be changed to intellectually disabled. Now, I have a little confession to make. I used to refrain from calling people stupid. I thought I was being clever and I would call people mentally or intellectually disabled, thinking I was being smart. No, that's wrong. It's actually a legal term. If somebody is having disabilities in understanding, say, in the cognition field, we shouldn't be making demeaning terms. It's just the same as this Alzheimer's disease. Don't you remember, we used to call it lüyán qīngmáizhèng? And that would be categorizing old people. As though if you're aged sixty or sixty-five and above and you're elderly, no wonder you've got lüyán qīngmáizhèng. But these days, we call Alzheimer's lù pǔfāzhèng. Now, that's a very general term and it refers to no particular age group and that's indeed utterly meaningful. And so I urge the judicial department to seriously consider changing terms like that to a more civilized phrase of giving a more civilized vibe. And that's for the time being, my two little observations. Thank you.
Boeing Hangyu.
Mr. Dennis Quoc. Chairman. In the last round, I was... Will you keep the mic higher, please? Yes. In the last round, I was talking about clause thirty-four B five and what is the original intent of this clause? And what loophole is it trying to address? Now, four cases with five judges that would fall under thirty-four B three and they are trying to insert thirty-four B three into it. In paragraph sixteen of the paper, it says that...
An amendment to clause four, zhe yí gā lǐ gè shōu zhèng àn of the bill, i.e. the proposed section thirty-four B subsection five, subsection A of cap four, to ensure that the reargument arrangement under section thirty-four B subsection five of cap four will apply to a court of appeal duly constituted under sections thirty-four subsection three, zhe huà gǒu wǔ gòu shàngshuó tìng de fá guān nà, or section thirty-four B subsection four, zhe huà shàngshuó tìng, rúguó hǎi děng liǎng ge fá guān nà.
If there are two judges upon commencement of...
Proposed amendment on reargument arrangement, close brackets, to the bill.
Well, a moment ago I said this and I don't propose to repeat that. Basically, from for four or five JA bench to here a case, it is a rare occasion. Now, the... You are trying to increase the efficiency of the JA bench to deal with the non-reformant cases. And if you are doing this through thirty-four B three, from the word go, we hardly ever had any scenario in which we had a five JA bench. And you're trying to insert thirty-four B three to thirty B five. I think this is really doing the superfluous. You're trying to increase the efficiency of the non-reformant claims. I don't propose to talk about the principal matters as the chair said we could have addressed this during the resumption debate. I am trying to argue whether we need to insert thirty-four B three. In the paper, the administration hasn't quite explained clearly what circumstances, under what circumstances you would have a five JA bench. Therefore, the non-reformant claims that a judicial review, if it is rejected by the CFI, under what circumstances do you need to have a five JA bench at the CFA to deal with the non-reformant claims? I don't think it is likely to happen unless the SJ or the judiciary can explain to us whether thirty-four B three will in fact be applicable in real life. I raise this doubt because if you look at a lot of these non-reformant claims, the bottleneck doesn't lie with the Court of Appeal, nor does it lie with the five JA bench or four JA bench tasked to deal with the cases. The pro-establishment members keep complaining about the bottleneck. I think the bottleneck lies with the Court of Appeal, lies with the CFI. When there are problems with the ruling of the tribunal, they would approve the JR. And they're saying that the Torture Claim Appeal Board has committed certain mistakes in the Torture Claims. Mr. Quoc, you are repeating lots of the arguments advanced by members during the resumption debate and also during the CSA stage. As I said earlier, we should not get bogged down on the principle. We should talk about the clauses. And you were talking about the three JA bench and five JA bench. Will you speak to the subject here? I'm not repeating, Chairman. The cases that I'm going to use have highlighted the problems that do not happen at the CA level. I'm trying to say for a two JA bench versus five JA bench, that's not really where the problem lies. For you to add this amendment to encompass the four JA bench or five JA bench, that doesn't address the problem. You have already articulated this point clearly in your previous speech. Chairman, you heard me, right? I'm not sure whether the secretary heard it right, heard me right. You're not supposed to impute improper motive to the officials. I'm not imputing any motive. You said that they didn't hear you right. You're imputing improper motive. But you understood what I said. I'm not going to impute any improper motive to anybody here or any officials here. But I think we have to use some real-life examples. Mr. Quoc, let me remind you, you're repeating your arguments. I'm not repeating the arguments. Okay, I refrain from making this point. At the CFI, they have spotted many of the problems at the TCAB. Just a minute, first Torture Claims Appeal Board, the CFA said...
A bare assertion that he is a homosexual, hence says that he will face penalty if he returns to Gambia. I do not accept a bare assertion without more or to discharge the burden of proof, even though the standard of proof is relatively low.
Well, the CFA said...
The AB adjudicator had misapplied the law, was unfair and unreasonable in his assessment of the claim, especially in relation to the claimant's risk of persecution as a gay man in Gambia.
In another CFI case, also a homosexual claimant...
Granted leave for the claimant to apply for judicial review. The court found that the TCAB adjudicator had erred in, number one, failing to apply the proper legal test in assessing persecution risk in finding that the claimant could continue to live as a gay person discreetly. Number two, failing to recognize that draconian laws against homosexuality in Gambia, which imposes sentence of up-to-life imprisonment, is in force. And number three, stating that the claimant can receive state protection from the National Intelligence Agency of Gambia when the claimant's fear of persecution and harm is at the hands of the state.
Perhaps this is another case law to show that the problem lies with wrong judicial proceedings and that can delay the whole proceedings. May I remind you once again that Mr. Dennis Quoc, you have departed from the clauses being examined. Please explain, Chair. Because we're now only scrutinizing the clauses, not the merits or demerits of the law. Please come back to the debate. Yes, Mr. James Toh. Chair, I hope you can reconsider what you said just now. Because Mr. Dennis Quoc was talking about the change from three JA to two JA bench. And yes, but I have to remind members that we are in the committee stage and we should not focus on the merits or demerits of the bill. Please sit down, Mr. James Toh. Mr. Dennis Quoc, please continue. I have a point of order. What point of order? This is not a debate of what he made my ruling. No, he is talking about the merits and/or otherwise of the CSA. Yes, when it's your turn, you can debate with me. Mr. Dennis Quoc, Mr. James Toh. I was just reminding the member to come back to the debate. Chair. Perhaps it's me. I don't know what we are debating about. And what do you expect us to say? Because we are discussing CSA to thirty-four B and that is to add section thirty-five three to section thirty-five B five. I'm saying that it is not necessary because the bottleneck doesn't lies with the CFA or CA. And in reality, there will not be a five JA bench. And this is the reason why we should not have this amendment because that is not where we have the bottleneck and I have read a number of cases. You have said a number of times where the bottleneck is. You have already elaborated your justifications. So please come back to the debate. And what is this debate about? This is a debate in the committee stage. I already said, the members should say whether they support the amendment to clause six four and whether they should support clauses with or without amendment standing part of the bill. Please come back to the debate. All right. Paper body secretariat, LC, paper number CB4714/1920. Paragraph sixteen.
...arrangement as necessary, taking into account the unique circumstances of each case.
Well, I've read the paper, but there is no explanation as to under what circumstances section thirty-four B three will be invoked and the reason why it should be added to section thirty-four B five. Because the paper silence is on when section thirty-four B three would be invoked. Would it be in cases where there is serious breach of human rights? And TCAB has made a serious error in law and that is going to be systemic mistake which may appear again. And under that circumstances, the Chief Justice of High Court will then say that for this case, either we have a two A, a two JA bench or five JA bench. That is where the ambiguity lies. I'm not sure when the High Court Chief Justice will tell judges that for this case, we need a five JA bench. Now, I have just quoted a few cases. You forbid me from referring to cases, so I not repeat them again. Now, in the cases I quoted, the Court of Appeal pointed out what were the serious mistakes made by CFI. If they involve serious legal principles and also breach of human rights, then there may be separate treatment. Or will the High Court, the Chief Judge of the High Court always ask for a two JA judge and not otherwise? Now, if for sure it will be a two JA bench, I see no reason why. We should add a scenario into section thirty-four B five, which will not happen. That is, under those circumstances, will court with more than two JA be constituted? Because in all cases, they'll be dealt with by a two JA bench. So the SJ should enlighten us on under what circumstances will section thirty-four B three be invoked? If it will never be invoked, then there is no need for this amendment. We do not need to make the original complicated procedures more complicated. And for basket factors to be considered by the Chief Judge of the HC, what are they and what are the necessary arrangements to be considered? Mr. James Toh. Chairman. I understand that you're reminding members that this is the committee stage. But do remember that, as I said in the second reading debate, your having a joint debate has created difficulties for us. Now, clauses with no amendments, in fact, there are many clauses with no amendments. And those are not so controversial ones. Although I understand that Mr. Jeremy Tam has commented on wording such as reasonable or due diligence, so and so forth. And there are also comments made by Dr. Fernando Cheng. But we have clauses without amendments that are not so controversial. But you have to bear in mind that we're having a joint debate. You should not have arranged a joint debate in the first place. Now, I will first comment on the clauses with amendments and that is the arrangement of the court. Now, the whole thing is about refugees. So we're proposing a reform to the judiciary. So instead of a three JA bench, it will be a two JA bench and there is nothing in the law to say that only apply to cases involving refugees. There is no way to tell first whether the court will only invoke this arrangement for refugees. And this policy to change a three JA bench to two JA bench, there is nothing to guarantee that this arrangement will only apply to refugee cases. Now, if the number of refugee cases fall to a large extent, then for the sake of justice, should we continue to use a two JA bench? The problem with having a two JA bench is you have not considered the scenario where the view of the two judges are one-to-one, one against another. And then you say here that the court can have a reargument with a three JA bench. The whole thing is about refugee cases. But the administration has never informed us as to the number of man-hours of judges as a result of this reform. Now, for some cases, you will have a two JA bench. And then in some cases, there may be a tie and then you have to make a reargument arrangement. You have to bear in mind that for this particular case, you have two hearings. Whereas if right from the beginning, you have a three JA judge, then for sure, there will be a majority decision. There is no need to have two hearings. So are you sure that the number of court hours will be lower? And you have to consider judicial justice as well. Now, judicial justice is so important in these cases. Now, if the difference is not that great, of course, you may assume that most cases can be dealt with by a two JA bench and the court can determine a certain case. We need to know the number of cases where the views of judges were three-to-one. Now, if for most of the cases, the decision was unanimous, then even with a two JA bench, the result would be unanimous. So to convince us, the administration should give us more statistics. In fact, this step should have been taken at the bill's committee's stage. But then no member asked for that and there is no such statistics from the administration. So we'd like to know whether in a three JA bench, then outcome was always three-to-one or three-to-zero. Now, if the decision was always two-to-one, then if we have a two JA bench, the result is very likely to be one against one. And as a result, a second hearing or a reargument arrangement will have to be done. Mr. Dennis Quoc. In his first and second rounds of speech, made it very clear that the bottleneck lies at the CFI instead of CA. Now, if there are more cases on the list, then the bottleneck is a CFI, not a CA. So how much can this amendment help? So from three to two, now if the decision is one-to-one, then reargument arrangement is needed. I'd like to know whether... I like to know whether without the amendment, we can, the the judge, the court can not cope. And there is still another outstanding point. If as said by Mister Dennis Quoc. The case is not hurt by one judge, but by two. Well, this clause applies. Or can you say that because a C A is a high level of court than C F I, then it is fine? Now, if for whatever reason, uh there is a two J A bench at C F I. I think we had uh the proposed legislation on um Ben on wearing of face masks. There were two judges. Now, and we have to ask whether the community will find this arrangement safe. That is Mister Jeremy Tam just now mentioned. Two or three scenarios. Let me quote. Amending the Chinese text from. I think the administration should give us an explanation, but so far we haven't heard one. Now, you explained that it's rather a draft a drafting matter, but that is not true. You need to explain first of all why you are making this drafting amendment. Is it from the administration's perspective? There is no change to its meaning and the level of um or the standard of the defense. What I'm most concerned about is the unintended effect. Because we have so many different scenarios. Well, it covers over a hundred provisions from the A G Cs or the amusement game centers. To karaoke establishment. Use, you know, um cross border, um currency. In possession, et cetera, a movement of physical currency, et cetera. Now, we're talking about the defense. And I do have reasonable concern. Would there be any unintended change? Coming back to my point, if it is a defense. And you absolved from liability, um you're not guilty of the offense, then this is an important provision. I think the difference with. Is the Chinese word. Because I think the two phrases without the text John may be very similar. They both contain the words reasonable and diligence. However, in the original. Try your level best. For example, um the provision of motor vehicle ordinance. I mean, um the legislation requiring you to provide particulars. Say, if you're caught by the speed camera and you're obliged to give information. Uh you've gone uh in excess of the speed limit by ten kilometers, then you'll be obliged to provide information about the driver. That's under the road traffic ordinance. In most circumstances, I would be the one, I would give my own particulars. However. Sometimes in a household, there may be a number of drivers sharing the same car and um. Then, when after some time, you're asked to provide particulars, then. According to the Chinese text. With reasonable diligence, then after a month, when I ask a family member, well, did you drive that car? A um license plate one B, uh A B one two three four, and what about the. amended text. I could just say I asked around, nobody answered me. Then that should suffice if I put forward this explanation to the police. Then according to the original text, if it's with. That means I needed, I need to not only ask a question, I also need to. Provide proof of any, say WhatsApp conversation or call records. I'm not going to speak at length on this point. Suffice to say that. And the substituted version. They're not on the same path is not down. In other words. You're allowing the person to give a perfunctory response, not to check. The identity card of the number of a minor or not to endeavor to provide particulars. Or I can give you dozens of examples. What I'm saying is you are lowering the threshold for law enforcement action to be taken. I don't know whether this is your intention. If it isn't, then indeed the threshold has been lowered. Well, I haven't even checked the English text. Let's say if both the Chinese and English texts prevail. You are lowering the threshold for the defense. That is, under some scenarios, um the requirements to make a valid defense will be lower. I'm not going to go through every provision, say for the karaoke establishments. In terms of fire safety, the person should make his best endeavor to provide information. Or should he just exercise reasonable diligence? I think this, I can go on and on about this topic. Perhaps other members of the bills committee can tell us whether they've given it a thought. And if so, um do they find it regretful and that the change should not be made? And whether we should not allow such a stringent threshold for defense provision. We spent over fourteen hours on this bill since the council meeting last week. We spent nine and a half hours on the resumption of second reading debate and close to. Two hours on adjourning the second reading debate. We've spent three hours today at the committee stage on the on the bill. And we've also spent four hours throughout the um procedures. On calling for quorum. Why would you say that we've uh spent three hours on something? It's just eleven o'clock. Well, um the figures are, the statistics are kept by the secretary. Please listen to me. We've spent three hours on calling for quorums. And myself and deputy already pointed out a number of times. That about repetitive arguments and we've also asked members to focus. Not to digress, members should note that this bill contains only one committee stage amendments. Other clauses come without amendment. As I mentioned just now, the committee stage of the whole council should focus on. Whether we support the C S A proposed by the secretary and also. Whether we support the clauses without amendment standing part of the bill. The committee stage is not the whole council. We have a limited time for for the council. The committee stage should not and cannot. Repeat all the deliberations made by the bills committee. We need to ensure that the bill can be scrutinized in within reasonable timeframe. As I mentioned just now. Discussing bills is not the only function of the council. As President of the Council, I need to ensure that the Legislative Council can properly fulfill its constitutional duty. Having considered the number of hours spent on the bill, the number of amendments. And the scope of work of the committee station, rights of members to address a council. Together with the heavy agenda we have. I think we need to strike an appropriate balance. To set a time limit for the committee stage. In accordance with rule seventy two bracket one of the basic law, which provides a. President of the Legislative Council powers over chair, uh over the council meetings. And to decide on the time of meetings, et cetera. I've decided that. After the lunch break at two P M latest. We will vote on the amendments and other clauses without amendment standing part of the bill. I urge members to be succinct and concise so that more members can speak. And if you wish to speak, please press the request to speak button as soon as possible. If I think member's argument is repetitive or if the member is digressing, I will direct him to discontinue. Yes, Mister James To. Chairman. I know your point, but I asked you to consider the following. Say for a bills committee, sometimes we spend a year or more in examining a bill. And if. We repeat the whole year's effort here, then definitely it's a repetition. Here, however. For whatever reasons, there was only one meeting and we've raised new points not discussed at the bills committee. Some members were not members of the bills committee. So time should be given for these members to raise reasonable concerns here. Chairman. Please consider the fact that you yourself, as well as your predecessors. Did give reasonable time at the committee stage and considered whether the bill had been. Laboriously debated or discussed at the bills committee. But if you, if members have strong views on the bill, they should. Join the bills committee for um detailed deliberations. I also noticed that only four members joined the bills committee. There was only one meeting to deal with all the concerns. And Mister Horace Jones' report as Chair of the B C already stated the details. As I mentioned just now, I need to strike a balance. We also need to fulfill our duty. We have a number of bills. In line, and I've also received notice from the administration that twenty more bills will be tabled within this year. Having considered all these factors, I've made this decision. Please don't criticize my decision and please use the time. To make a succinct speech to raise your concerns and make comments. The point of order, Mister Abraham Shack has a point of order. Yes, point of order. Yes, Mister Abraham Shack. Point of order, Chairman. I agree with your observation on how this, on the conduct of this council meeting, especially on. Um article seventy two, one, seventy three of the basic law. But you need to strike a balance. Uh you cannot be arbitrary in allowing a member to speak and not allowing another member to speak. We we should rely on the principle of efficiency. The reason, just like the reason uh reasoning behind this bill. When you exercise the principle of efficiency, you also need to consider the principle of procedural justice. In other words, you need to understand the philosophy of the bill, the principles of the bill. They should be allowed to speak. We've spent a lot of time. You need to strike a balance and allow members to explain. Based on the principle of procedural justice, why they are putting forward this bill. Now, Chairman, I subscribe to your views, but on the other hand, we need to allow. Allow them to explain their argument because. I think many members of the public would like to. Have a better understanding of the bill. It sounds complex, but there is. Um way out, you need to impose a time limit on when we should conclude. Right, Mister Abraham Shack, you you made a point, and of course, you're also one of the veterans in this council. You should know that we start scrutinizing a bill by setting up a bills committee. We do have ample time for that. And if many members join the bills committee and if they want to deliberate in detail, they could have done so. Um however, I know Mister Horace Jones' uh bills committee report. And I've also listened to the arguments put forward at the second reading debate and it seems quite repetitive. Uh actually, these points have been repeated even at the committee stage. We've spent, you know, close to three hours this morning on it. Um I still have one hour fifteen minutes for members. To make concise speeches to address the issues. Many members who spoke this morning actually repeated their arguments. I also hope members of the public. To to understand the bill, but members should be concise.
Mister Joel Wen, thank you very much, Mister Abraham Shack for speaking up. And I can assure you, Chairman, that what I'm going to say has not been said by other members. And I'd like to make a quorum call first.
Mister Joel Wen. Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, we are debating the C S A here in part five. There are three divisions that are worth mentioning. And maybe some members of the public may agree here. I think I should take this opportunity to briefly talk about this and I can assure you that I'm not repeating. Division one regarding the widows and ordinance, the surviving spouses are added. And include section thirty-five, the Widows and Children's Pensions Ordinance, section ninety-four, cap ninety-four. I don't propose to repeat them one by one. They're all in the ordinance. For the Widows and Children's Pensions Scheme Ordinance, it was in nineteen ninety-three that the title has been changed. It's only today that we see this late, what I call the late spring. The Surviving Spouses and Children's Pension Scheme. And we're just using the new title here. Maybe the S J can explain to us why this amendment, which is not highly technical, why do we wait until today that we, we have the consistent title? Were there any problems with legal ramifications? Now, it is an undesirable situation. Is it because of lack of manpower or is it because of inevidence? There are two other parts that have the same problem. I am highlighting this without repeating myself and I look forward to a response from the Secretary. Is the administration certain that this problem will not occur again going forward? So have you sorted out all the inconsistencies, all the problems there? How can we? Well, it would be good to have changes than, than to have no changes. As I said, this was amended in nineteen ninety-three and it's only, it's not until today that we are making these consistent. This is an undesirable situation. As I said, this may not give rise to any grave problems, but in other cases, it may give rise to grave problems. Part two, division three. This has to do with enforcement. Public Swimming Pool Regulation one, cap one three two. This is amending section thirteen about the general penalty and the eviction, the power to evict the swimmers. Thirteen-one to repeal sixteen and substitute twelve, by twelve. This is, this seems to be rather straightforward. But section thirteen-one provides for the eviction of the offender who can be penalized, who will be penalized with the level one and custodial sentence. Sixteen, ten, section six, ten-six. Now, under the law, there is no section ten-six and therefore, we need this amendment. So this is really a considerable problem, which has been around for so long. Why do we have a situation like this? Many members of the public may wonder. Were there people who were penalized erroneously, where powers exercised erroneously? Why do we have these loophole here? We would not object to the amendment here in, in this exercise. Because this is really glaring loophole. Now, for section ten-two, if someone has not paid the, the fees upon entry, unless with the permission of the attendant, they're not supposed to, to enter. This is to substitute ten-six. And those who enter without paying will be penalized. Now, there is a bit of a myth here. I'm sure that previously, there were people who were unlawfully penalized by exercising the dubious power. And this may be a minor fine and people may not be prepared to pursue the matter. I, I like to bring this up because you've got a point there, Mister Chairman. We should not focus on one single area and we, we should focus on the other areas as well. There are other areas where the administration or the legislature might have omitted these loopholes. I think the law enforcement agency deserves condemnation. And when it comes to swimming pools, the, the L C S D deserves condemnation. Now, this can be a custodial sentence of fourteen days. I'm sure that this must have happened before, when you institute the prosecution. The S J or somebody from the D O J should have spotted the problem. Or is it the case that nobody has ever been prosecuted and you've been very lenient to the, the people and you just allow them, allow people in? Or the people are very civilized that they never go in, they never went in without paying and they never breached ten-two, section ten-two. It is media paper tiger, a toothless tiger. It doesn't serve any purpose. Chairman, this can give rise to grave consequence. It has to do with the legal justice. And why is it that the law enforcement agencies, the L C S D is a dedicated department responsible for the enforcement of the law here? Or is it the case that they never did their homework properly? If they have instigated any prosecution, then, then that would give rise to a tremendous problem. I hope that the, the Secretary will address this problem. I've given the undertaking that I'm not going to, to repeat myself. At the last point I, I'm going to make is part six. I'm, I'm not talking about the, the, the particles in the Chinese language. That this is to amend for consistency, sick. Part six. The jury's ordinance, cap three, section seventy-nine, the schedule there. In the first schedule, this is to appeal the three thousand dollars fine and substitute by no less than a level two fine. It seems very straightforward, but there, there are some implications there behind that. In the scheduled form one, it is a form to impanel on the jury. Those who are selected to become a juror. There is a penalty for non-compliance. There is a fine of three thousand dollars. And the amendment is to substitute no, no less than three thousand by no less than level one fine. Cap two-two-one, equivalent procedures ordinance, a schedule eight, level eight is five thousand dollars. So this amendment is not simply to achieve consistency. This is effectively an increase in penalty. And there are legal implications here. When you adjust the fines upward or downward, there must be some rationale behind, behind it. This amendment is, they're telling us that they, they are making things consistent. But in fact, in this amendment, if someone doesn't comply with the, the request to be a juror and the fine will be increased to five thousand dollars. Like you said, that we should have joined the bills committee. I think to be fair, there are so many bills committees and there are different combination of amendments. At the point I'm trying to, to make, I'm going to spend about one or two more minutes, Chairman. Since this is to increase the, the fine, it's not just a semantic amendment. Mister Wang. I heard some phones ringing in the chamber, please. Will you silence the phones, please? Mister Wang.
Thank you. You have very good ears. I couldn't hear that. As I was saying, this is not just a textual amendment, rather raising the level of penalty. And now, if it is about summons for illegal parking, then now, it's now, the fine is raised from three thousand to five hundred, to five thousand. And simply because you don't want to be a juror. So perhaps there should be some explanation on the rationale behind it. So it's raising the level of fine. So it is a change in policy, not a textual arrangement. Now, I think we have missed at this point. We were all arguing about whether it should be a three or two J bench. But nobody has argued over this. So for once, I'm very obedient. I follow your appeal in pointing out at this point. I hope the S J can spend some time to explain to us. I believe many members have doubts about this. So I asked my colleagues, indeed, it's not just a textual arrangement. Has there been a mistake or is there something I've missed? So please, I'd like to me, I hope the S J can take some time to explain to me afterwards. Thank you. Miss Claudia Mo.
I promise, I just have a couple of relatively minor points to make. Regarding part five, division one, I need to applaud the J O D, the amendments contained in this particular section. And that is, when we talk about the former Widows and Children's Pension Ordinance, the word widows is now gone. It's being replaced by surviving spouses. Now, that's a very sort of general and harmless and unoffending term. And it helps, actually, to get rid of this patriarchy or the sense of patriarchy in this society. Or you would say it's just a matter of semantics. It doesn't mean much. But it's still a step towards getting rid of this, all these patriarchic or patriarchal, rather, thoughts and biases in this society. Now, patriarchy, we all knew. It's about the oldest male in a clan ruling over the entire family. Or for that matter, in the animal world, it's the alpha male, right? It's this male domination or we would call it male chauvinism. Excuse me. You are distracting me, sir. Thank you. Yeah. Hong Kong, essentially, is still a very much a patriarchal society controlled by men. We would say, although, of course, there is a female participation in many areas. But still, is, there's plenty of male chauvinism. I mean, the fact that an ordinance would be called Widows and Children's Pensions Ordinance. Seriously, only widows? What about widowers, right? So it's, you are adopting a very correct approach. And that, that is, we de-sex, we de-gender people in this regard. We talk about surviving spouses, plural. Now, but this plural is slightly baffling because you would assume the pensions would be received by one spouse only. So why the plural? You're not, obviously, including concubines or ex, the husbands or wives, right? Why the plural? Or is it just part of the legalese? That's the way it is. And when you talk about surviving spouses. Now, the one curious thing is, of course, I realize in Hong Kong, we do not still regard gay marriage as illegal or acceptable. But Taiwan has marched much forward than us in this regard. But what if a spouse that would come to the court with a marriage certificate from, say, Taiwan or for that matter, I, I don't know, some parts of the United States or even Canada claiming to be a surviving spouse? What are you going to do about it? Now, once again, that would prompt a very likely more judicial review applications, right? This is rather curious. But I still need to applaud again the administration's determination or effort in, in trying to rid the, the feel, the vibe of patriarchy in Hong Kong. Because here in Hong Kong, women still encounter this hurdles called sticky floor and glass ceiling. I, I'm sure you've heard, Miss Jiang, right? So this is good. And in part five, division two, it's about, it's the protection of women and juveniles ordinance. Now, again, in here, originally, there is such a term as female infant. That really, it's beyond any civilized person's understanding. Excuse me? A female infant? What about, so there, there, something quite different from a male infant, right? Of course, there's some historical background to it. And once again, I'm quite convinced, I confess, I haven't done any research into this particular term. In Chinese, it sounds even more ridiculous. It says, lei yao lian yan. What on earth? Lei yao lian yan. What about lao yao lian yan, right? So this female infant is now being taken out. And it's changed into any, any young person or child. And it's dropped altogether, right? And so, no, the original wording was female infant and any young person or child. It's very redundant indeed. So good on you. You change it into child and/or juvenile. Now, of course, my understanding in Hong Kong is that a child is a young person aged fourteen and below. If you're not quite fourteen, you're still called a child. And a juvenile in Hong Kong is defined, well, I understand technically, legally, as somebody aged fourteen to sixteen, right? I hope I'm not wrong. Do correct me if I'm wrong. And so, this is the a good way of getting rid of some of the most archaic legal language in Hong Kong law. I mean, I mean, this is revelating, eye-opening that we would have included terms like a fe- a female infants in in a certain law. Fine, except, except, uh there's one query. Now pardon me, because I don't have any legal training background. I understand that we also have this Juvenile Offenders Ordinance. And it's about uh young people committing an offense. And that juvenile courts in general do have the jurisdiction to hear uh or determine the determine a charge against a child or young person of any offense other than homicide. Okay, never mind homicide, but that's distracting and that's irrelevant here. All I'm saying is, a juvenile court can try a child. And so it isn't a bit of um confusion there? Now, I I don't quite understand, as a result, how you could just say child or juvenile when uh juvenile actually already includes the concept of child. The fact that we don't have a child court or children's court in Hong Kong. We only have juvenile courts in Hong Kong. And juvenile courts include the trial of or the trying of a child. So that that's what's been baffling me the whole morning. So I wish, if possible, that the uh the judicial official, Ms. Zheng, could shed some light in this regard. And that you'll be also changing the term for those who are mentally disabled uh to now call them, calling them mentally the discapacitated, is it Fernando? Incapacitated, right? That's such a great leap forward. I applaud you once again for that, thank you.
Mr. Kenneth Lo. Deputy Chair, call for quorum please, Mr. Wu Chi Wei has called for a quorum. We have a quorum, meeting is resumed. Mr. Kenneth Lo, Madam Deputy. For the Statute Law Miscellaneous Provisions Bill twenty nineteen, I think there is one uh point not yet discussed. I think this also has an implication on how we interpret the bill. That is, Part Three. Part Three Amendments, Cap One, Section Thirteen, Interpretation and General Clause Ordinance. The amendment is quite simple. I hope the Secretary would listen to my argument and take action so as to rationalize this amendment. The amendment provides that references made to an ordinance may be made, and that according to the title, short title citation number or chapter number used in verified copies of legislation that are printed directly from the approved website of an electronic database of the legislation of Hong Kong, apart from copies printed by the government printer. I emphasize the word verified. And it also provides that verified copies will be added. Now, this sounds quite simplistic. I make this point because Cap One IGCO Interpretation and General Clause Ordinance are often cited. Because it provides interpretation of terms in other ordinances, for example, um a working day or a whole working day or Central People's Government. The interpretation of these terms can be found in the IGCO Cap One. Now, the amendment to Cap One is simple. In future, if we want to make reference to another piece of legislation, we can cite the title or short title as for the source of such references. A, it states the copies printed by the government printer. Now, I don't know how many members have visited our library, but we have a Hong Kong Laws section. Copies of the ordinance are printed by the government printer, we have dozens of copies. And those are verified copies of legislation. So that's one acceptable source. That is, uh if the title exists in the copies printed by the government printer, then you can make such a reference. The other source is verified copies of ordinances. And here, verified copies of legislation refers to Legislation um Publication Ordinance Five, Section Five One, that is Cap Six One Four, um and verified copies in it. So this doesn't refer to hard copies. So let me refer to Section Five One of the Legislation Publication Ordinance, Cap Six One Four. I want to know what verified copies is. Um, and it says, approved websites that um publishes the legislation of Hong Kong. So what is meant by the approved website? There is no definition here. I checked Section Three A of Cap Six One Four, which states what is meant by the approved website, that is the DOJ's e-legislation database. And then Three D, the approved website of an electronic database of the legislation. And then um printed copies directly from these webs, uh from the website. That's for Three A and B. Now, we're familiar with the uh Hong Kong Laws website. We know how copies can be printed, we can check the titles and chapter numbers. However, having gone through this part, see, when I tell Mr. Wu Chi Wei, he may not understand my point. After the bill has been passed, well, Secretary, I think you should amend Cap Six One Four as well. The reference to verified copies. Because the majority of members not in the legal profession. Lord Bingham's Rule of Law provides one important principle of the rule of law, that is for, that should be accessibility of the law by members of the public. The laws must be accessible to promote the rule of law. If laws are not in, are not accessible, then it's impossible to promote the rule of law. So for verified copies, I um made various references to different ordinances and still I don't know where I can find verified copies. Now, if there are two websites approved, then perhaps in another exercise, uh another miscellaneous provisions bill, you can provide a schedule to Cap Six One Four. Because we're using the electronic version anyway. You should provide a list of websites for public's information so that we can have um full information of the laws of Hong Kong. I hope the Secretary would accept my suggestion. Let me remind members that the President already made a ruling on the time allowed at the committee stage. The uh the committee stage will end around one P M. What members uh members would like to speak should press the request to speak button as soon as possible. After the lunch break, meeting will resume and we'll invite the Secretary for Justice to res- to reply. Mr. Wu Chi Wei. Now, I'd like to talk about Division Six. Um, it is an amendment to provide drafting consistency. Mr. Andrew Wen just now referred to um some points about the public swimming pools and our question is, apart from public swimming pools, whether in other pieces of legislation, the same problem arises. For the jury ordinance, according to the latest schedule, Schedule uh Eight Level Two fine, that is five thousand dollars, would be imposed instead of the original three thousand dollars. I won't go through this in detail, but the substantive change is that according to the deliberations of the Bills Committee or in the Bills Committee, uh in the Bills Committees' report, I do not see the rationale. Now, whereas for road traffic ordinance, Cap Three Seven Four and its regulation, some provisions entail penalty. Section forty-six, for example, passengers of a public bus or a public light bus or any passengers intending to board such a vehicle should not resort to offensive um remarks or offensive behavior. And um the passenger should not distract the driver and see the pa- the passenger should not engage in an intentional, such an intentional act. Breaching the above would attract a fine of three thousand dollars. So if it is provided in the law that a three thousand dollar fine would be meted out, then for consistency's sake, the administration should bring all levels, um all penalty provisions on par. That is, uh you should increase the fine from three thousand to five thousand dollars. The reference here is not clear. If you want to have consistency, we want to know how wide the scope is and whether after the amendment, level two fine will be adopted. Secretary, you need to explain that. So that when we read the handout in future, we'll know how the administration addresses this issue. This amendment entails um an amend, uh a change from three thousand dollars to a reference to level two fine. If this is a general amendment, you, then there seems to be um, you know, omissions. Otherwise, you need to explain the specific amendment. Next, I'd like to pick up on Mr. Andrew Wen's point. He made an important point, and I invite the Secretary to explain to us. Whether the inconsistencies in the laws of Hong Kong have all been addressed or whether uh we'll take things step by step and there will be other bills to deal with miscellaneous provisions in the future. I think we should get an understanding, because the Department of Justice should be our gatekeeper. I believe um there must be some obsolete phrases, provisions, some inconsistencies uh in drafting, and they should be addressed to avoid unnecessary legal battles.
uh, in drafting and they should be addressed to avoid unnecessary legal battles for the benefit of the defendant as well as the law enforcement agencies. Such conflicts should be avoided. So, Secretary, you, perhaps you can elaborate on this point. Uh, without further ado, I conclude my speech here. Madam Deputy, Dr. Fernando Jung. Madam Deputy. Well, you've, uh, imposed a time limit and that this debate will come to an end at one P M. Then please don't arbitrarily disrupt what we want to say. We want to lay out our argument. We want to make our positions clear. So please have some, have some respect, uh, for members' rights to address the council. And it's not just talk. We are putting forward some important, uh, arguments. Explaining important concepts. So, uh, I hope I'll be allowed to speak. And in this round, I'm going to explain my objection to the word M I P, mentally incapacitated person. I'm not going to repeat the point made.
In three pieces of legislation. Um, the word mentally retarded is replaced by mentally incapacitated. As I said in my, uh, previous round. Uh, this is in contravention of C I P D, um, the U N Convention. This was implemented in Hong Kong in two thousand eight. It's been um, twelve years since. We haven't moved on with times. A lot of the requirements and concepts in the convention are not, um, implemented. The reform should have been done a long time ago. In this statute law amendment. Uh, instead of, um, moving towards, um, the C R P D. Instead of moving towards the requirements under the C R P D, we are moving in the reverse direction. Under the C R P D. We have to respect the differences. The, uh, signature party will ensh- will have to ensure that everybody is equal before the law. Article twelve provides that before the law. One has, um, to be recognized as equal. So the disabled, uh, people should enjoy, uh, the same equal footing before the law. They should enjoy the same legal rights. More specifically. I'm going to cite, um, a quote, um, Peter Barnett from University of Nottingham, Nottingham. He's a legal professor whose, um, specialized area is, um, mental law. Person with disabilities have the right to recognition everywhere as persons before the law. State parties ha- shall recognize that persons with disabilities enjoy legal capacity on an equal basis with others in all aspects of life. This is very important. Appropriate measures to provide access by persons with disabilities to support they may require in exercising their legal capacity. State parties shall ensure that all measures that relate to the exercise of legal capacity provide for appropriate and effective safeguards to prevent abuse in accordance with international human rights laws. But what this means is that everybody is equal before the law, including those who are disabled. Including, uh, those who are mentally incapacitated as referred to in this amend bill. They should enjoy the same legal rights. Now, how is it this being inconsistent with what we're doing? We're making the distinction here. Um, one is mentally incapacitated, the other one is mentally capacitated. And the mentally incapacitated do not enjoy certain rights other people do enjoy, like, um, the consent to sex. They simply don't enjoy the right. We are differentiating people into two classes and it's, um, like a black and white, uh, situation. And this would affect all the safeguards, all the protection that one is enjoyed, one is enjoying under the law. Where does, um, the person choose to reside in, what service he's going to get during the day? Uh, the choice of certain, uh, medical procedures. Um, and also the financial choices, these will be restricted. So this concept of mentally incapacitated um, is, um, objectionable. We simply cannot use this concept to make a distinction between people. In twenty twelve. When, uh, examining the um, practices, uh, in, in China and, and Hong Kong. Article twelve of the C R P D, it says that in terms of establishing um, a, a system of care, that they express consent is in contravention of Article twelve. The, uh, signature party doesn't have a system where the, the disabled will have, um, the autonomy to take the decision in accordance with their preference and favors. They, they should be, uh, given the support and supportive, uh, decision. The committee urged the, uh, signature party, uh, namely China and Hong Kong Public Health to take measures to remove, um, the legislation i- in this regard and they should legislate to, to make sure that, um, there would be a supportive decision, um, system. So we shouldn't have any full incapacitation. In twenty twelve, in the Eu- European Union, in the Human Rights Commission. Uh, they've also published a report urging all the Euro countries to revamp the law to remove a full incapacitation. To make sure that, um, the full incapacitation should be eliminated from the law. The committee also said that anybody exercising the, the right under um, section twelve of the C R P D should have the preferences respected. The committee also urges the, uh, signature party to formulate and implement a blueprint to facilitate the implementation of the policies. And there should be a recognition of, um, the legal rights on the part of everybody. Um, and assistance and support should be given when necessary to help people exercise their, their legal right. There should be provisions, um, to make sure that this will happen and that there should also be a feedback mechanism. To ensure that the assistance will satisfy the personal needs and to facilitate, um, the um, decision-making. So when we introduce this concept of mentally incapacitated. This is in fact running counter to the U N's, uh, C R P D. And also the observation, this is inconsistent with the observation that they have. A Law Reform Commission did make some proposals. Uh, there is a report on the sexual crimes, um. There was a report in December twenty nineteen, which highlighted all these amendments to the sexual offense. They proposed that for the mentally incapacitated people, um, cap two hundred crimes ordinance. There are many provisions that have to do with the M I P, mentally incapacitated persons. And section one, two, five. Sexual intercourse with, uh, the mentally incapacitated. And a man who is, who has, um, unlawful sexual intercourse with a mentally incapacitated woman is an offense. And upon, um, summary conviction, uh, one is liable to a ten-year custodial sentence. Under the existing law. There is no regard to the sexual autonomy on the part of, um, the, these people. So the L R C did make some, uh, legal proposals. They are proposing, um, recommendation twenty-three is, um, to, to set up a new offense. Uh, to coerce um, then procure sexual, um, acts with the mentally incapacitated. And recommendation twenty-four, uh, to ins, to lure and, and threaten the mentally incapacitate, incapacitated people to engage in sexual acts. And this is, um, an improvement in itself. We're not having the dichotomy that these people don't even have the right to decide on, um, sexual acts when they are lured and threatened and coerced into these kind of sexual acts. It would be an offense. And this is an improvement in itself. Unfortunately, this recommendation has not been taken on board, uh, by the administration. This has been given a short shift. So when we consider these, um, ordinances, we cannot be stuck in a rut. Under the mental health ordinance or under the, um, crimes ordinance, there are many provisions that has, that have embedded this mentally incapacitated concept. It doesn't mean to say that this concept is correct. Today, in twenty twenty, the C R P D has been enforced in Hong Kong for more than a decade. We're still going backward. They are saying that this is wrong. This concept is erroneous and they are telling us to make amends. We are going in the reverse direction and we are making the right wrong again. So are we really, um, putting the cart before the horse? I mentioned the word mentally retarded, I mean, this was, it's not supposed to be used. That we're not, we, we should not use a wrong concept to replace, um, this wording. We cannot deprive, uh, the, these people of their right altogether. So, Madam Deputy. I very much hope that the Secretary for Justice and the Law Reform Commission and indeed the U N Committee recommended, all together with, um, the disabled groups, uh, should all of them should, um, come together and have a look at the legislation, not just, um, the, the statute law ordinance. We should look at the legal framework and we should have, um, a um, comparison with, um, all the relevant provisions to see whether or, or or what provisions are in contravention of the C R P D. In two thousand eight. When we subscribe to the C R P D, we should have done all this work a long time ago. I am mystified why the government is so lax and incomprehensive. The committee in the U N has already pointed out that, uh, we are committing all these errors. Even today. I'm not, um, making irresponsible remarks. I, I just hope that the Secretary for Justice will take this seriously. And what we say should not fall on stony ground. This is an issue we have to face up to. We have to be accountable to the United Nations. We have to be accountable to what we do under the convention.
Uh, your time is up. Now, response to, uh, what Dr. Fernando Jung said in his speech. Uh, Sir Chair, I have to ensure that members speak in accordance with the rules of procedures. Um, members, uh, have made very specific, um, uh, elaboration of, uh, the clauses in the bill and those remarks should have been made in the Bills Committee. Unfortunately, only four members of the Council joined the B C. As Sir Chair, I have to ensure that your remarks will not be repetitive to ensure efficient use of our time. If no members intend to speak, I will call upon the S J to speak. Mister Wu Chiu-wai calls for a quorum. Where for quorum? Secretary for Justice. Doctor Fernando Jiang, what's your point of order? Uh Deputy Chair, I still uh intend to speak. I was the last to speak. I only had the opportunity to. Press the button again after I had sat down, but I've already called upon the S J to speak. So um S J. Relation to issues raised by members, I would first like to. Uh explain our amendments to members to facilitate the correct understanding of the matter. On the point of having a two J A bench instead of a three J A bench. Members asked why uh section thirty four. B three should be added to section thirty four B five as well. Now, in I'd like to read our uh reply to the legal advisor's letter from the administration. Uh dated the thirteenth of May twenty twenty. We um relate views of the judiciary to members. According to the. Judiciary. Uh of a court uh constituted under section thirty four B three. The um administration um. It is a judicious understanding that C has really. At all been constituted pursuant to section thirty four B. It is not judi- judicious intention to disapply through the amendments proposed to be. In the bill, the present reargument arrangement under section thirty four B five of cap four to C duty constituted. Pursuant to section thirty four B three, and that is when the court. When the court has the initiative. To. Uh raise a motion to make an order on a some motion for a. A reargument of a case or. When the C consists of an even number, uh cannot come to a unanimous view. Now, members raised a number of points related to, for instance, the Chinese rendition to cannot with a reasonable diligence. Now, in fact, this is just a common law concept. And uh there is an objective test and this is never a change. We have adjusted the uh Chinese rendition. Uh for standardization sake, sometimes there is the Chinese character that thick, sometimes not. It is just uh for uh the uh smoothness of uh the text. As mentioned by one member. There is no actual uh change in the legal implication in essence. Another member. Mentioned the jury ordinance. Under the jury ordinance, uh the fine of three thousand dollars and a fine at level two and also the difference between the two. In fact, there is no amendment. It is just uh to tidy up for consistency's sake. Because under section thirty two one, thirty two one of the juris ordinance, uh instead of three thousand, it has been amended to a fine of. Level two, but in schedule one of the ordinance, uh the um references though are three thousand dollars. So we've taken this opportunity. To line the uh wording in the. Schedule for consistency's sake, so the amendment is simple in nature. And I've noted comments by other members, but I have nothing more to add because uh. Are they are irrelevant to uh the subject in front of us today? The S J has replied, what is your point of order? Uh Mister Wu Qiyuan, I intend to suspend the meeting. Well, uh the S J said that uh members' remarks were irrelevant to the subject of the debate. In fact, our members have spoken on. Uh points uh in the bill. Regarding uh consistency with other uh legislations. So I think the S J should clarify on this point. S J, do you have anything to add? Members mentioned a number of other issues. Uh such as interpretation of the legal provisions. However. Uh the purpose of the bill. Uh is just to make textual and simple amendments as regards the debate. On the High Court ordinance, I have already referred to this point in my reply. In the second reading stage, the Secretary for Justice have spoken again, so the meeting is suspended. When we resume, we will start to vote on the clauses. The meeting is now suspended.